Testing one, two.
We have an incinerator?
Are you ready? All right. Welcome, everyone. San Rafael City Council meeting. Today is Monday, February 5th. And I'll request that the city clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yaren Scolati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here this evening. Invite the city attorney to report out on the closed session that was held prior to this evening.
Good evening. No reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you. So, welcome, everyone. If you're here listening in or here in person, I like to, excuse me, I always like to give a shout out to our staff that does such an incredible job and a special shout out because we've had some pretty fierce storms since we were last here in the chamber. So, thank you to the Public Works Department. Thank you to the Fire Department and the Police Department that responded to all the emergencies that have cropped up. I think we came through, I should probably like knock on wood when I say this, relatively unscathed. We do have some power outage still in San Rafael, my house included. And we know that PG&E is, and I think Councilmember Yaren Scolati as well, so.
Recording in progress.
It might work.
And you were, okay. So, we're hopeful that we will get back online. So, again, thank you to staff and hopefully the next coming storms won't be as fierce as the ones that we've had. We have a great agenda this evening and I do like to include a land acknowledgement as part of the opening. In addition to this land acknowledgement, we collaborate with the tribe over our shared issues. So, we thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, many whom today are tribal citizens of the great Morajoria. And we honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. So, again, thank you for being here. I'm going to turn to the city clerk because we have an interpreter this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Before we begin, I'd like to announce that tonight's meeting will include Spanish language simultaneous and consecutive interpretation provided by qualified interpreters on the Spanish channel. If watching on Zoom, you can join the Spanish channel by clicking on the interpretation icon in the toolbar. And if you're attending in person and don't have access to the Zoom meeting on your phone, you can see me and I can get you set up with one of our devices so that you can listen to the meeting in Spanish. As a reminder, we ask that everyone participating tonight, please speak slowly to allow our interpreter to effectively express our comments.
Gracias, alcalde, Se Kate. Y antes de comenzar, me gustaría anunciar que la reunión de esta noche incluirá interpretación simultánea y consecutiva al español, proveída por intérpretes calificados sobre el canal de español. Si ustedes ven a través de Zoom, pueden unirse al canal simplemente haciendo clic en el botón de interpretación que aparece en la barra de funciones de Zoom. O si están atendiendo en persona y no tienen acceso a Zoom desde su móvil, por favor, vengan a verme y yo les acomodo con un dispositivo para que puedan oír la reunión en español. Como un recordatorio, les pedimos a todos los participantes de esta noche que hablen lentamente para permitir que los intérpretes efectivamente expresen sus comentarios.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. For members of the public wishing to provide comments displayed on the podium and the projector is a timer to help you stay within your two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. You can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. If you're experiencing any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofsanrafel.org. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, if you haven't attended a council meeting in a while, many of you are here at this earlier start time. We now start at 6:00. And in addition, the open time for public expression is at the end of our business meeting. So, we will get to that, but we will go through our agenda first. And the first item, city manager and council member reports. I will turn to city manager Alilovich.
Good evening, mayor. Council members in the community, I have a few updates for you tonight. I also wanted to piggyback on what Mayor Kate said about our incredible team, our public work staff, the maintenance staff have been out there all throughout this storm, working overtime and incredibly responsive and making sure that we're all safe, that trees are removed and from the roadway. So, we really appreciate them and also our first responders who there's a significant uptick in calls for service and fingers crossed, it sounds like we're in good stead except for the, Director Miller wanted me to mention that the lights are still, the traffic lights are still out downtown right now and they're working with SMART and PG&E to try to get those back up as soon as possible. I also wanted to, we have an item on the agenda tonight for the police accountability and advisory committee bylaws. And I wanted to acknowledge that we have a few of the members here in the audience tonight that I'm really happy to see this evening. And I attended both of the first meetings along with the chairs, Assistant City Manager Angela Robinson-Pignone and Lieutenant Eberly, who are also here, who are co-chairing that new committee. And I just wanted to appreciate them and appreciate the committee for their hard work these first couple of meetings, that the committee members, I feel like really came together and worked really well together. And so, I'm really excited to see them here tonight. Just wanted to appreciate and call them out. Another exciting announcement, our very own Mayor Kate has been selected for a really exciting opportunity. It's, she's one of only eight mayors nationwide for this prestigious, it's what it's called, is the Mayor's Institute on City Design, Just City Merrill Fellowship for 2024. This is a semester-long program that focuses on tackling injustices in each of the selected cities through planning and design interventions. The program is a collaboration between the Mayor's Institute on City Design, the Just Lab, the Just City Lab at the Harvard Graduate School of Design and is funded by the National Endowment for the Arts. So, over this program, Mayor Kate and myself, I feel very privileged and blessed to be part of this work with her and Digital Director Sean Mooney will work to identify an address injustices in San Rafael's social, economic, and physical infrastructures to kind of bring and workshop through this project. And we're really looking forward to bringing those learnings and new innovative ideas and approaches. Back to San Rafael. There's an event, a King Tide event this weekend, Saturday, February 10th at 9:00 a.m. at the Borough Center at 50 Canal Street. So, this is an opportunity for neighbors to come together where we have the highest tides, which clearly we're at right now, known as the King Tides, to collect data about their risk of flooding in the canal neighborhood in East San Rafael. So, you can register if you want to participate at cityofsanrafel.org/events-king-tide-day. And then lastly, there's a, I'm not sure how to pronounce this, instead of February, it's for brewery month in downtown San Rafael, which is kind of fun. So, there's lots of local pubs and breweries and tastings in our local restaurants. So, just encourage everybody to get out there and have some fun. There's a bunch of information about different venues or highlighting different local craft beer. It's a whole month-long event and you can get more information on the Business Improvement District website and chamber. And I think you can take the Smart train. I think there's a Smart train connection to the, come to drink your beer and not drive and go home on the Smart train. So, that's all I had for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. I'll turn to my colleagues, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I have two meetings that I want to report. I did attend the Marin County Council of Mayor and Council Members Meeting on January 24th. It was a remote meeting. We did receive reports from the Golden Gate Bridge Highway and Transportation District Director, Dennis Mulligan, mostly about the suicide net that is nearing completion and talked a lot about that among other challenges that the district is facing. In addition, I did attend the Ritter Center Groundbreaking Celebration on, also January 25th. And that was an amazing experience. Mayor Kate was very capable in taking a huge hammer and smashing a wall open.
They told me to, just so you know. I was asked to do that.
Those are my, that's my report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Yaren Scolati.
Yes, thank you. I would like to report one meeting. On January 18th, I attended the CCAP Community Forum Meeting, which is the Climate Change Action Plan. This is our quarterly meeting. It was very well attended. It was hosted by Marin Academy and it was really inspiring because we have students from Marin Academy presenting on different projects around climate change. We had Marin School of Environmental Leadership, or Marin SELL, which is a school within the school at Terlinda High School, also presenting on some of the projects that they are working on around climate change. So, there is a lot of hope for our future with all these young people. And of course, always managed by Director Corey Bitoff, who is an amazing leader for our climate change. And another, other things that we discussed was countywide building electrification strategy from Marin County, Sustainable San Rafael. So, yeah, and I forgot to mention that, of course, Mayor Kate was actually there. So, it was great to have you as well. And I was going to mention as well, again, the Saturday, February 10th, the King Tide Day Event, 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. City manager already mentioned the event. We have so many partners and we really would love to have as many people as possible because it's so important for everybody to really get conscious of what it is sea level rise and that we are experiencing every day, almost, definitely today as well, in combination with the rains. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. I participated in this year's Point in Time Count, which at 5:00 a.m. with Lynn Murphy. So, we were out there. We will not get those results until probably in the summer. Takes them a while to get the updates. So, it'll be interesting. And that's really important because that information is used as we apply for additional grants and support services. Provided the opening remarks at a forum to recognize the International Holocaust Memorial Day that was sponsored by Miller Creek Middle School, as well as Jewish Family and Children's Services, with a Holocaust survivor, Anita Frank. And there, it was a cold rainy night and they were expecting a few people and they had 400. So, it was a lot. The Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority Board Meeting, really would like to call out that we made a significant investment to approve the Genesis Protect Evac evacuation. This was previously Zone Haven. Zone Haven was acquired by Genesis. And it also includes a new traffic modeling component, which allows for real-time traffic reporting information. This would be used by the first responders, as well as being able to simulate different evacuation scenarios. And so, I think the community is going to really benefit from this tool. They attended the first five Marin County Children's Summit and then was also at the Ritter Center Groundbreaking and was very impressed with the wall. That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Bushy.
I'll start with a couple of small things that are important. I worked with the Peacock Gap, the Homers Association, to resolve a landscaping issue that was taking place out in our neighborhood. I also met with the CEO, Kelly Smith, of United Markets, discussing a variety of issues and their role in the community. A nuts and bolts issue, they're losing all of their shopping carts, which are very expensive and an ongoing issue for them. I also met several times with the owners of Marin Roofing, Chris and Rob Miller. They have similar issues, only on a much bigger scale and much more close to their operation. So, I was pleased today to obtain the agreement of Supervisor Rodini to go on a walk-around at that neighborhood with me. I've already done that with Supervisor Sackett, which I thought was very illuminating for them to help understand the sort of the impact on businesses of our unhoused residents. I also participated in the quarterly meeting of the county water managers. And that's under the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members. And that, as I'm sure you've all read in the newspapers, all of the reservoirs are full and in spill. So, we're flush with water, a nice place to be compared to where we were two years ago. The most significant meeting I attended, though, was today with Marin Transit. We had a presentation regarding the Muir Woods Shuttle. Very important, very convenient way to get to Muir Woods. Now, it's very important for our visitors and to maintain and manage the congestion, traffic congestion around people going to Muir Woods. It is a very expensive program, though, and there have been some new negotiations with the National Park Service for them to absorb more of the cost so that it's not all on Marin Transit. So, and adjustments are being made to make it more tailored to get the maximum bang for the buck because it's not an inexpensive service. So, we're working on that and we adopted a new contract for this coming year with Bauer Transportation. And we also, in consultation with the Transportation Authority of Marin's executive team, our team at Marin Transit brought forward a set of principles to guide the negotiations regarding the regional transportation measure being contemplated by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, MTC. The most important, in my opinion, component of those principles is a requirement that any funds collected from a county be spent basically in that county so that we would have an equitable distribution of funds collected in the program. There were other requirements, but I think that one is the most important to counties such as ours that do not have the big transportation services that are in such dire need of operational funds. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. I have a few to add. As you know, I'm your representative on the Sonoma Marin Area Rapid Transit. We had quite a long meeting recently with lots of successful things that we have successful items. And the first one is that SMART was under litigation for the pathways that are being converted to bike paths. So, that was a lawsuit that was brought to SMART. There were 130 plaintiffs and 100 of the plaintiffs were dismissed as they did not qualify under the lawsuit or what they were claiming. The insurance carrier decided to resolve the lawsuit prior to going to trial, but no SMART funds were used to settle the lawsuit. I want to make that very clear, there were no SMART funds that were used to settle the lawsuit. And what is wonderful about this news, it means that SMART can continue to assert that we have an authorized and legitimate use of the pathways that are adjacent to the Smart Rail Track, which was part of the original ballot measure. So, that's great news. In addition, ridership continues to increase, although we found that when it rains, people don't get on the train. So, you can see that our numbers are getting hit a little bit. Yep, I think it's because there's work flexibility and people tend to work from home. But in 2023, when you look at 2023, we had 750,000 riders. That was up 4.5% over 2019, which is the date that we look at because obviously it was prior to COVID. In December of 2023, there was a 40% increase over ridership from December 2022. So, again, just showing that we continue to have people who are using the trains and very excited to be on the train. And that also includes the pathways. We are also seeing lots of people walking, biking, and running on the pathways. In addition, the Windsor Extension, again, part of the original ballot measure, had been approved by the voters and that construction is underway. Thank you to funding that we have received from the federal government. Two more things. Well, one, because you already mentioned Feb brewery, which you're right, you can do, take SMART because it's not just breweries in San Rafael. You can go up to the North Bay and there are breweries that are involved up in the North Bay in Petaluma and Santa Rosa. And finally, SMART has strategic plan workshops. So, we're looking at revising our strategic plan. We've already held one on January 31st and they're via Zoom. You don't even have to drive up to the North Bay in order to participate. We have four more coming up, February 7th, 28th, March 14th, and March 27th. They all have different topics. So, if you're interested in participating in the SMART strategic planning, please go to their website and you can see what topic is for each area. So, that's my very comprehensive SMART report. Few more things. In addition to the Ritter groundbreaking, but really wall breaking, we had a ribbon cutting for Ranch Water Bar. It's a new bar that's down by the SMART station, actually. It was very well attended. The new proprietor is from San Francisco and I think we will be pulling in a lot of people to downtown San Rafael with his well-known reputation. TAM, I'm your representative, the Transportation Authority of Marin. I had two meetings. We had our Safe Roots to School, ad hoc committee. We talked a lot about crossing guards. Crossing guards are important because they relieve congestion and that parents feel safe having their kids bike or walk. There are always more, let's see, more demand for crossing guards than there is resources. And so, we had a conversation about what has been approved this year and what will be approved going forward in terms of the algorithm that is used. In addition, at the TAM meeting, so that was a night meeting, it was quite a long agenda, but the one item I want to highlight is we discussed the Local Road Safety Plan. This is a document that TAM funded and it's not just for San Rafael, it's for all of Marin County. It's incredible reading. It's eye-opening reading in that San Rafael has the highest number of incidents between cars and pedestrians and bicyclists. A big part of that reason is we are on the main line, right? So, if you are coming from Fairfax or San on Selmo or Ross, you're probably driving on Second Street. And so, our data shows that. So, with the data from the Local Road Safety Plan, we will be looking at that. And as we revise our bicycle BPAC, we see Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee Plan, we tried really not to do acronyms up here. So, for BPAC, we'll be revising and updating our BPAC plan and we'll be looking at the Local Road Safety Plan data to make sure that we're really prioritizing the intersections that need the most support, that we can enhance their safety. I had Laurel Dell second graders were here. There were 48 of them. And let me tell you, I have never seen a better behaved group of second graders. They were fantastic. Their questions were really hard. And it was not the usual, what's your favorite color? It was, which I do get asked, it was, what was the meeting that you were just in prior to this and what did you learn? Swear to God. So, these students were here and they actually were over at the Public Safety Center with Lynn Murphy. They got to talk to, I think they talked to the Police Department, they got to meet Blue, the therapy dog, and they were fantastic. Our future is in very great hands. Two more things. San Rafael has participated in the Gun Safety Collaborative since it began. Chief Spiller and I have been representing that. And it is, the whole point of the collaborative is how do we reduce gun violence and the potential for gun violence in this community? It has been an issue of which I'm extremely committed to. And this was our first meeting of the year, yeah, actually, in January. And this was our first meeting of the year, yeah, actually, in January, and we heard from Suicide Prevention Collaborative. If you want to learn more, I'd be happy to talk to you about it. You can go online and learn. The rates of suicide in Marin are always higher than it should be, but they're higher than the national average. There are lots of reasons for that. And their suicide prevention has been doing phenomenal work with looking at the data and really meeting people where they are to get them the support they need. So it was a very sobering meeting and it informs the work that we're doing. So how do we keep people safe in our community? And I really appreciate DA Lori Fergoli. She's the one that convenes that group. And then finally today, and on up note, I even got a flag. Senator Mike McGuire, who represents part of our district, so he's started up in Healdsburg, but we are part of his district. He was sworn in today as a 49th President Pro-TAM of the California State Senate. And so myself and a few other supervisors were invited to the ceremony and it was amazing. It was up at the state Capitol. I always think as I sit here, go San Rafael. And what I learned is like, go California. That was what was the theme today and we all had flags. But I do want to say Senator McGuire has been a champion of San Rafael. He supports the work that we do here. He has brought critical funds around the unhoused population to our community and it was great to have him such an elevated position. So thrilled that he's there and supporting our community. So there were lots of reports because your council and your city manager were busy people. But of course, we always want to offer the ability for the public to comment on our reports before we get to our consent calendar. So if there are any folks that would like to comment on the reports they just heard, now is your chance. So on the reports you just heard, Mr. Bingham, yes? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Good evening, councilmembers. I wasn't prepared to do a comment, but was intrigued by your comments about the Local Road Safety Plan. And I do a lot of road safety work and I haven't done enough, but I would really like the City Council to adopt the concept of Vision Zero, which is happening all over the country. Just as one example, Hoboken, New Jersey, which is about, I believe, the same size as San Rafael, has not had a single death for seven years. And they have really focused infrastructure issues, all kinds of different issues, but it needs to rise to the surface. The person who was recently killed on the railroad track because something is wrong with that design there that needs to be looked at. So and connection with road safety, it's sort of related. E-bikes and kids, and you're probably hearing this from lots of people, but I live in Terre Linda and it is out of control and I'm not in favor of enforcement, but we need to look at it because what's going to happen is someone's going to get killed. I've almost seen it happen twice. And then all of a sudden, that's going to focus attention. Let's look at it before someone gets killed. Thank you.
Thank you. And you'll be pleased that the local streets plan is a Vision Zero plan. So we will have a presentation here at the council. So absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Anyone else like to comment on the reports? Not seen any. I'm going to close the public comment and come to the consent agenda.
Mayor Kate, may I toggle our interpreters?
Of course.
We're ready.
We're ready. Thank you. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to pull from the consent agenda? Looking to my left, seeing none. Looking to the right, okay, there'll be no items pulled from the consent agenda. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar, which is items 4A through 4II? So if you'd like to make any comments on the consent agenda, now is your moment. Not seen anyone. I will bring it back to the council for a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yen Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you. We have a special presentation. First, it is a proclamation. I have a proclamation I'll read, Supporting Black History Month. Prior to doing that, we do invite public comment on this item before I read the proclamation. So if anyone would like to comment on this proclamation, now is your chance. Okay, not seen anyone. I'll go ahead and read it. Black History Month, February in 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial, Black History Week was expanded and established as Black History Month. And people across the US have dedicated this month to honor and uplift the often overlooked and under-recognized accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. Whereas the 2024 Black History Month theme is African Americans in the Arts, which seeks to further education, emphasis and celebration to honor the historical significance and impacts that varied individuals from Africa, the Caribbean and throughout the world have had on the arts and to empower future generations to continuing, to continue contributing their unique stories and talents. Whereas the Western culture often denied or minimized the contributions of many Black and African individuals, however, their resistance, passion for their work and influence is seen across the arts, be it spoken word, dance, painting, fashion, folklore, cooking and artisan craft work from antiquity to present day. And whereas the city of San Rafael supports and encourages employees and community members to delve into the history of Black and African Americans in the arts, especially in genres of interest, and find that many of the connections and influences these works have across all artistic fields today. And whereas the City Council of San Rafael is proud to recognize Black History Month and urges everyone to join in celebrating the accomplishments of Black and African Americans and the artistic legacy they have carried and permeated into the cultural fibers of our nation. Therefore, let it be resolved that the mayor and the City Council of San Rafael proclaim February as Black History Month and encourages all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of Black Americans throughout the history and in the generations to come. And I'll just conclude by saying, and I only know this because I read the IJ, that Felicia Gaston, who is a phenomenal activist powerhouse, who started a group called Performing Stars, has a kind of mobile Black History Month education curriculum, semi-curriculum, that sounds super dry, but presentation that she's bringing to public schools and public libraries in Marin for the month of February. So the students will be able to have the opportunity to learn more through Felicia and her presentations. Did you want to add something, City Manager Lilich?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that she's also going to come here and do a special presentation for City of San Rafael staff in February as well.
Fantastic. Well, I'm glad that we're able to have that proclamation today. So on our public hearings, we have one item and it is the Gender Neutral Language Amendments to the Municipal Code. That tongue teaser, teaser, I'll turn it over to Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. My name is Lindsay. I'm the city clerk. And the item before you this evening is the introduction of an ordinance that would amend our municipal code in its entirety, which would replace all of our gendered language with gender neutral language in our municipal code. We're responding in 2017, there was state legislature Senate Bill 179 that was approved that allowed for, provided for a third gender on licenses, IDs or certificates. Response to that was the League of California Cities developed a best practices guide for municipalities to follow. One of those listed items, and it's a long list, it's linked in the staff report if you're interested in seeing more, anyone from the community is interested in seeing more. But one of those listed items included updating our municipal code, city policies, records that we could amend or modify and to replace all the gendered terms with our, with gender neutral terms. The action also falls directly into our goals and objectives. We have a policy focus area specifically for diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, and it falls right in there. We have Exhibit A, which is attached. I just wanted to make a comment because we did receive some correspondence around when to use they, them or there. And it's not exhaustive, Exhibit A. So ultimately, the city clerk's office will be working with our vendor to make sure that it's grammatically correct if it was to be approved or introduced tonight. And the item before you this evening, the action that would be taken if approved is to introduce the ordinance amending the San Rafael Municipal Code in its entirety to replace gender-specific language with gender-neutral language, waive further reading of the ordinance and refer to it by title only. If it is approved this evening, staff would return to the city council, the next regularly scheduled city council meeting for final adoption. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Questions? These straightforward questions over here? Yes, Councilmember Bushy.
It seems that your approach has been to find the gender-specific terms and change them to a different term that encompasses both genders. Is this process going to be open to the possibility of just rewriting the sentence to not have any gender reference in it at all?
That was an option. Thank you for your question. We reached out to our vendor who's been doing this throughout the state since 2017 and amending in entirety. It was an option, but ultimately we just chose to replace to they, there and them.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Not seen any additional questions. I will open public comment on this item. If you'd like to comment, please come down. Not seen anyone. I will close public comment. There weren't any additional questions, so I will turn to my colleagues for comments and then possibly a motion. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. This feels completely appropriate for where we are. So thank you for bringing it to before us and look forward to voting yes on this measure or on this action. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? No, would you like to make a motion?
Happy to make a motion. Should I reread what you said or just go with your, as you read it?
Yes, as I read it.
Yes, as you read it. I'll make the motion.
Oh, you'll, yes, I'm so sorry. You'll need to move including the ordinance.
I need to read it. I've read it.
I'll read the same thing.
Like to introduce an ordinance amending the San Rafael Municipal Code in its entirety to replace gender-specific language with gender-neutral language, waive further reading of the ordinance and refer to it by title only.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I would like to second.
Yes, please comment.
I would like to comment that this is long overdue.
Second. Yes. Couldn't agree with that more. It's been moved and seconded. Do you do the roll call or do you read the ordinance first?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yen Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Now I'll ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
Just for a third time for fun. An ordinance of the City of San Rafael amending the San Rafael Municipal Code in its entirety to replace gender-specific language with gender-neutral language.
We feel really strongly about it. That's why we read it three times. So with that, we look forward to having it come back at the next meeting. Thank you. The next item is the Police Advisory and Accountability Committee Bylaws. And I am, oh, I am sorry, Assistant City Manager Angela Robinson-Pignone. Floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, councilmembers and members of the public. I also want to acknowledge that I'm joined tonight by Scott Everly, Lieutenant Scott Everly with the San Rafael Police Department, who's also here to answer any questions that you may have. And also want to acknowledge in the room, we also have Chair Kemenah from the Police Advisory and Accountability Committee, in addition to Salama Locke, who's a member of the committee, and well as Daniel Alms, who's well. So I know the city manager kicked it off with acknowledging them, but I just wanted to take a moment as well to acknowledge their presence here. So I'll be providing brief presentation on the development of bylaws for the Police Advisory and Accountability Committee. So on June 5th, the City Council adopted Resolution Number 15225, which not only established the PAC, but also directed staff to work with the committee to co-create its bylaws. And this is somewhat different than the other boards and commissions that have been established by the council. The council generally authorizes the bylaws along with the creation. And so this was a unique opportunity to work with the commission at its onset to develop these bylaws. So staff prepared a draft of the bylaws as a starting point for discussion and presented the draft at the December 20th PAC meeting. Staff developed the bylaws to align with the resolution 15225 with established committee, but also to include references to feedback received during the 2022 and 2023 community outreach done in policing in San Rafael, as well as the City of San Rafael's rules for boards, commissions and committees that was adopted in 2023. At the December 20th meeting, the PAC did continue the item to the January 17th meeting to allow additional time for the PAC to consider its, the bylaws before them. And also to allow them additional time to provide their feedback. Member Locke did provide her edits in writing and these are provided as Attachment 5. And so at the meeting, the committee generally concurred with staff's draft, but there was some interest in concluding some texts from Member Locke's sections to 1.2 and 1.3. And you'll see those sections in the redlined versions of the bylaws. And so following the PAC meeting, staff did revise the draft bylaws to incorporate much of the feedback. And again, these are included as Attachment 6. This is the clean, excuse me, this is the edited version. The PAC did consider a four-month work plan at its January 17th meeting, which prioritizes several topics that will not only provide them with a deeper understanding of the work of the San Rafael Police Department, but will also enable them to begin to advise the city on matters ranging from recruitment of officers as well as law enforcement training and many more. And so that concludes the presentation at this time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And certainly Lieutenant Everly is here as well.
Thank you both for helping to facilitate this important process. I'll turn to my colleagues for questions. Vice Mayor, questions?
No, I don't have questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Yep, Kurtz?
No other questions right now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Oh, yes, Councilmember Bushy.
My question is about the work plan. I see you laid out the first four months, which makes complete sense. What is the process going to be for the rest of the months? And are you considering sort of ongoing items that will be always there in addition to special topics that may come up?
So that's a wonderful question. And so again, since this is the inaugural PAC, we figured that a four-month time plan was reasonable. And the police chief, in consultation with the city manager's office, we came up with these, with these topics, of course, and gained their feedback, but the idea would be to go back to them in April or May to do the balance the remainder of the year. We believe that these topics will give them a firm grounding in law enforcement and may bring to mind future topics for consideration. Now, there will be some standing topics based off of new members being added to the PAC. So for example, there's going to be space and time for Brown Act training or there may be, there's certainly expectations around use of force, which because the city, because the city has to bring a report to council every year on the city's, excuse me, not use of force, of use of military equipment. So those are things that would be perhaps standing items based off of the need for the council to take some action, but those are just some examples that immediately came to mind. But again, we expect to go back in either April or May to provide the opportunity to provide additional input in terms of their work plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yen Skoladi, no questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. I will open the public comment and I actually invite one of the co-chairs, Chair Paula Camina, to speak first during public open comment. I know your co-chairs, Fatih, I don't think Fatih is here, but welcome. And we'd love to hear from you as part of public comment. Kick us off.
Thank you. First, I'm Paula Camina. I am a resident of San Rafael and I am honored to have been appointed to this committee. And thank you for your trust and investment in me. The first thing I would like to say is the staff, this is the first time I've actually worked with a lot of the staff in San Rafael. You have incredible people working with you. They have spent so much time training us, trying to get us organized because we're a very diverse group. And I think that we've managed to come together with some understanding. So thank you for that. You know, as you know, we've had a very healthy discussion about the bylaws. There's not a total agreement, but I think that the draft, the second draft that has been proposed does cover a lot of the issues that we have. And so I would support that new draft. And that's, unless you have any questions for me, that's pretty much I want to say. Welcome to my, it's sad, you know, being on a brown Welcome to my, it's sad, you know, being on a Brown Act committee and the members don't all know each other. And I thought it was a great idea if we could all, like, meet for coffee to get acquainted, and I found out that's a big no-no, which I knew, but it's sad that we would like to get, I would like to get better acquainted. So, thank you.
Yes.
Any questions?
If we have any questions, we know that you're here. Thank you for stepping up to be a co-chair and as well as the other two members that are here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Salama, are you speaking? Oh, you are. I couldn't see you. Welcome, Salama. Why don't you pull down the mic a little bit? Okay.
At the Board of Supervisors, it's like right up your eyes. So I always pull it down.
There we go. Thank you. Now we can hear you. Perfect. Thank you.
So Salama Lox, and I'm one of the alternates on the committee. And I rise today as a community member to say that I would like to make a recommendation that this, the current presentation of bylaws be not adopted tonight, but be considered at the next Monday meeting. And the reasons being, the summary of our assistant, our assistant city manager, and forget for me, Angela, because I forget your last name, and I want to say it right, but anyway, acknowledged that there was, that the summary was a collaboration of what the input of the committee was and so forth. But there were three areas in which I did not see reflected in the draft that is presented to you. I did send some supplementary information to you, my letter that I sent to the membership and the reasons for why I incorporated the things that were there and trying to bring all of the issues together. In addition, the, I think it was April, the concept letter that the city presented, which had the title of this, of the developing committee, had the word "community" in it. And that was what we discussed. And what we compromised with was Community Advisory Police Accountability Committee. And that was input from the committee, and I do not see it reflected in the draft that you have. In addition, and I only have 26 seconds, in addition, the other two areas were the number of members on the committee. I came before you in November after speaking with the community and hearing their input that it was really mandatory that there be someone who had had a less than positive interaction with the police, with policing, not necessarily San Rafael. It could be, you know, law enforcement. And, and the third area, and that was community input, the third area, was where it said advisory only on my draft. You'll see that I put in that there would be review. Review is reflected, but it, we do not see this as a review-only committee, but a community, the community's representation is that it have oversight.
Thank you.
So those are the three, those are the three areas. And so I'm recommending that it not be approved tonight because it is not a reflection of some of the committee
Thank you.
input, and that it be considered next Monday, the next Monday meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment on this item? Welcome, Mr. Bingham.
Steven Bingham from
Yeah, why don't you pull it back up? There you go. There we go. Then we can hear you better. Thank you.
Steven Bingham from Terre-Linda, and I want to support what Salama just said. I was on the community group that helped develop this plan, and I really appreciate the work of city staff and the chief in bringing this to this point. But it isn't quite ready for you to act on this issues that Salama raised. There's also issues of, that were raised at the meetings about who would be eligible to be the chair of the commission we were concerned about. There were issues regarding filling vacancies with an alternate. I don't want to get into it here because it was a discussion, but it just doesn't feel right now. And I think we need time to work with staff to bring back something that reflects better some of the, basically, I wouldn't say unanimous, but it was the sense of the PAC members that there were certain things that they agreed with in the draft redline that Salama prepared. It just ended up not getting reflected in what you have in front of you today. So, you know, it's, there's no rush to get this done tonight, to have another couple of weeks to talk with staff and get something in front of you that more, that better reflects that. We would appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Welcome.
Buenas noches a todos. Creo que ya todos me conocen. Mi nombre es Gabriel Wina Garcia. Soy un líder comunitario dentro del área de Canal. Y soy un Is he translating? Va a traducir él?
Go ahead, and then he will interpret.
He's gonna really interpret it well this time because we've been having a lot of issues with that in the past.
I hope he will.
Okay.
Interpret it well, not translate.
Great.
Go ahead. Thank you, Gabriel. Go ahead.
Mi nombre es Gabriel Wina Garcia. He's been a leader comunitario por varias décadas en el canal. Y he sentido siempre las cuestiones que ha sufrido nuestra comunidad. Y yo soy parte de la Liga de la Justicia y hemos seguido este caso desde que fue golpeado nuestro hermano López. Y realmente todo este proceso ha pasado y nosotros hemos seguido la cuestión de que se haga un, un, no un comité, sino con una, una grupo de vigilancia que trabaje con la policía, que sea funcional para la comunidad, que no sea una cuestión simplemente que se crea y luego no ceden los beneficios para que la comunidad tenga confianza en todo este proceso que se está haciendo. Should I translate?
Why don't you finish your comments and then he'll interpret?
But I think it's just, I think it's better if we translate for pieces.
Well, traditionally, what we do is you do your two minutes and then he does it. You're not confident in the process. Let's see how it works. If it doesn't work, how about that?
Okay, right.
Okay?
Y digo esto porque es importante que realmente se escuche la voz de la comunidad. Porque realmente no se ha escuchado la voz de la comunidad. Se ha escuchado la voz de la comunidad a través de agencias que han tenido intereses propios. Y eso no es realmente la voz de la comunidad, tal como lo dijo Salama. Salama es una de las que ha venido siguiendo este proceso, y ella está en el grupo de alternativa en vez de que estuviera dentro del grupo que toma decisiones, porque ella está experimentada en todo eso. Entonces pienso de que realmente tuvimos una reunión con la comunidad hace poco y escuchamos la voz de ellos. Tuvimos casi cerca de 100 personas y realmente quiero que nos escuchen. Gracias.
Is it Pablo? I'm not sure who's
No, it's me.
Go ahead.
Sorry. And the only thing I didn't get is the gentleman's full name. Mr. Garcia.
Gabriel.
Okay, Gabriel, okay. He said, "Good evening. My name is Gabriel Garcia. I'm one of the leaders in the Canal area. I have been so for several decades, and I am here to talk about the issues of the community. I am part of the Justice League. And when our brother López was impacted, we continue to fight for this. We want to form a vigilance group in collaboration with the police, but not just create one, but have a group that actually does something and builds trust. It's important to listen to the voice of the community because the community has not been heard. There have been several agencies that communities go through that have, that are self-interest community agencies. And we want it not to be like that. For example, Salama has followed this process for a long time, and she's an alternate. She's not actually in the group, but she has experience with this. And recently, we had a meeting with about 100 people.
Is there more? It seemed like there were some more.
That's all that I got. I'm sorry.
That's okay. This is not easy. Gabriel, yeah, why don't you just the part that was missed? And thank you all. We want to
Y escuchamos la voz de la comunidad y sí expresaron de que ellos tenían mucha miedo e intimidad contra la policía. Estaban como nerviosos y no querían expresar sus sentimientos por la misma razón que el miedo los mantiene en silencio.
Thank you.
And we are trying to hear the voice of the community, but they are fearful and intimidated by the police. They don't want to speak up because of this fear. I'm so sorry. Got that very last part I didn't get.
Gabriel, thank you for your patience. No, we want to get it all. Last sentence.
Por eso es que escuchamos la voz de ellos y venimos a expresárselo a ustedes y quiero que nos escuchen y creo que el poder reside en la comunidad y la comunidad hace a todos los representantes dentro de la ciudad.
Thank you. Gracias.
Okay, and that's why we're here. We want to express our feelings and want you to listen to it because there is power in the community and the community represents all the people.
Thank you. Thank you both. Any other public comment on this item? Again, thank you all for hanging in there because we really want to hear from everybody. Okay, I am going to close the public comment. And so, okay, I will reopen the public comment, so come, come down. If there's anyone else before I, didn't mean to do it so quickly. Hi, Marina.
Hi. Muy buena
Pull the microphone down so it makes, we can hear you. Okay.
Espera.
Yeah, perfect.
Muy buenas noches a todos, concejales, mayor, y aquí nuestra querida Christine, todos ustedes. Yo estoy muy contenta que hayan creado este comité de PAC, porque de verdad espero que las personas que escogieron escuchen las necesidades de la comunidad, escuchen que no nos sentimos seguros, no solamente después de lo que le pasó al señor López, sino que esto viene desde mucho antes. Yo espero que, por favor, nos compartan reportes de cómo van progresando. Tengo entendido que ellos van a tomar un entrenamiento primero. Y este, tuve el honor de platicar con uno de los miembros, y él es un ejemplo de cómo debe ser un miembro de este, de este comité, y deseo que, por favor, nos tengan actualizados en cómo este comité va a funcionar y qué van a hacer para proteger a todos San Rafael, pero principalmente a la comunidad de Canal. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Thank you. We listened to the
Okay. She said, "Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, and our dear Christine. We're very happy that this PAC committee has been formed, and the people, we hope that the people who are chosen will listen to the needs of the community. They don't feel safe, as an example, what happened to Mr. López. But that was just one incident. This has been happening for a long time. I hope you will share reports of the progress that you're making. I understand that there's going to be a training first. I had the honor of speaking with one of the members, and this person is an example of what a member should be in this, in this group. So I hope you keep us informed of how you're protecting the citizens of San Rafael, but especially the people from, from the Canal District."
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Didn't want to close. Okay. So now I'm going to close public comment. Thank you. And I'll bring it back to the council for comments and questions. There was one question that came up very specifically about the name of the committee. So there have been two meetings already, so I know there's been quite a bit of discussion. So if you could just speak to that, there was assertion that there was, that a name was agreed on, but it's not the name of the committee, so.
So, so the name was discussed, but there wasn't a consensus agreement about whether or not to change the name. So as Member Lox mentioned, there was, she brought forward the historical context and that there were discussions previously about naming it the Community Advisory Committee, but that wasn't the agreement of the PAC. If you look at her letter, it even predates the forming of the PAC and it predates the authorization that the council provided in June. So yes, there were discussions about the community being a part of the name, but there wasn't, again, there wasn't a lot of affirmation in that regard. Quite frankly, the committee expressed interest to move forward with the bylaws and to get to the work of understanding police operations, which is why the work plan is so critical. But there was not a consensus on whether or not to change the name, but the committee did appreciate that that was part of the discussion prior to the formation of the PAC.
Thank you. And to clarify, the meetings were recorded, so anyone who, interest is piqued after hearing tonight's conversation can go back and listen to the conversation.
Yes. So the meetings are, these meetings are recorded and, and so that people can, can see for themselves. And of course, minutes are produced as well.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is, before I go to questions from my colleagues, is I was going to ask the city manager, just maybe on that historical context, because there were conversations with about a dozen, two dozen people prior to the formation of the PAC. And then maybe I'll turn to the city clerk that can talk about the number, oh, she, this is the interpretation switch, but then I'll ask you two to talk about the number of applications we had for the formation of it. So wait one second.
I have a question about consensus.
So
I know I'm out of order, but she stated consensus, and I want to know how was she measuring that?
Thank you, Salama. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much. So, Madam City Manager, maybe you could just speak, because there are some members of the public who spoke that aren't on the PAC, but were part of conversations that took place. So I want to clear up any confusion about that.
Sure. I'm happy to give a little background and context. The councilmember, Urán Galati, and yourself, Mayor Kate, I, the former city manager, police chief, we spent some time with some community folks following the incident last year. We had the community forums and community outreach events, and we were having some kind of what I would call iterative collaborative conversations about what this type of committee could look like, what it would look like to rebuild trust with the community. And Chief Spiller had a concept that he was bringing forward at one point, and we had some early discussions, very conceptual, about moving in this direction of forming a formal committee around police accountability. So during that time, there was a lot of feedback that we received, both from the community and from this group. We had a consultant that we hired, who we still work with, Francine Ternor, who's a police accountability expert and has worked in this space for a really long time. And so the, this, establishing the police accountability and advisory committee that happened with the city council this past June of 2023 was kind of a culmination, an iteration of a lot of feedback on that concept, that it came to this place of where we present it to you as staff. So is that helpful context?
Yeah, and maybe speak to the community meetings, the high schools, because when you say community, it's a really broad word. So if you could speak to the groups that the city specifically reached out to.
So we did have some really, I'll just start with the schools. We did have some really fantastic focus groups with the youth of both Terre-Linda High School and San Rafael High School. And we had multiple interpretive meetings at Alboro Center. We had 100 people at one meeting, over 50 or 75 people at another meeting, where we did small breakout groups, so folks could speak with a facilitator that was a community member who is a bilingual person, so that we didn't have police or city staff sitting in those community circles, so that people would really feel safe to open up and share what their concerns were. And so if you look in the establishment of the, of the PAC, you'll see those kind of key themes, and that's what we sourced to guide and direct what the scope and purpose of this advisory committee would look and feel like. So it was, it was an extensive amount of input that went into, went into that, to that document. I'll also just speak briefly before I turn it over to the city clerk to talk about the process. We did have a really robust community engagement effort to, for applications for this, but just briefly on, when it comes to staff's recommendation, after we go to a board commission or committee, and there's been some discussion, so it might be the Design Review Board, or it might be the Public Art Review Board, and there's discussion amongst the board or committee members, staff will gauge consensus, often based on how many of the members are interested in a particular editor or a particular change. When there is group in a particular editor or a particular change. When there is group consensus, it becomes fairly clear and where one or two people are interested in something, staff will take that into consideration. So we have all the notes and we've documented all that. And then what we do is we synthesize it into our staff recommendation to you, which you may modify at your, you know, you have the ability to say to us, we appreciate your staff recommendation. We want you to do these things, but we'd like you to modify this. So it is a process of taking, you know, what we hear and what we think is in alignment with the direction that we've had from you in the past and bringing forward what we think is the best recommendation on those edits.
And then could you also expand? This is a brand new committee and unusual and about the co-creation or the really the input that the commission or the committee gave to the, to the bylaws? Because all, we have lots of boards and commissions and this is unique in the way, the amount of input and where we're starting from. Could you just speak to that? Because it is, we're doing things a little differently for all the right reasons.
We wanted to be really inclusive about that. And not that we haven't been inclusive in the past, but it's very difficult procedurally with the Brown Act, although we love the Brown Act, city attorney. It is very difficult.
I wrote it.
It is very difficult to, to start from scratch on something like that. And to your point about it being a first, when we established the committee, we brought that recommendation to you. We said, we've gotten all this input from the community, but we want to do this robust community engagement effort. And we want the committee, the first of its kind, to have some input in what those bylaws said. So they felt some, you know, a sense of ownership and some input into them. We really wanted to make sure we allowed. So we allowed two meetings for that process to, to give input, something we've never done. Typically, what we do is we establish a committee and the staff recommends the bylaws at that time. I would say that's a very, that's a typical practice in most local governments and we wanted to try something different. And I, I think we got some really great feedback and it made it a better document for, for them as a, as a committee.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, if you could speak just to the process, because again, just to provide context for folks who might not be familiar.
Yeah, thank you. Our process was different than anything we've ever done for boards and commissions before. We did a longer recruitment. Typically, it's about three weeks in years past. This was three, about three or four months of very consistent outreach to the community with digital and our, our, I'm forgetting her position, I'm so sorry, but we did, we did significant outreach. We ultimately landed with 34 applicants, which is a record by far, a landslide record by far. Very, very proud of the amount of applicants that we, that we had apply. Two rounds of subcommittee interviews were held because we've never received that high of a volume of applicants. So we did hold two subcommittee interviews. From that group of 34, a top 12 was selected to go on to be interviewed with, by the full city council. And from that 12, nine were selected to be appointed, two of them being alternates, seven being regular voting members.
Thank you. So, so thank you. I just wanted to provide context based on the input we got and this is an important issue. So now I'll turn to my colleagues for additional questions that they might have. Yeah, Councilmember Kurt's question.
Sorry, I was writing my notes at the same time. Can you speak a little bit to the bylaw revision process? Because this is so new and it's sort of grassroots of how it's developing, do you anticipate that the, the bylaws could be revised periodically?
So consistent with, you know, past practice, yes, bylaws are a living document and, and if, if the committee does come forward with some recommendations, much like we're bringing them forward today, then that's something that the council can, can choose to take up. I'm not, because I'm still fairly new to the organization. I know, I can't speak to many, many, and I would defer to the city clerk around the number of recent bylaws changes that there's been. But certainly, if there's a need to evolve the purpose, then that's something that, that the committee could consider and bring forward to the council to take, to take action.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as the work plan and the bylaws, do they, does one need to be done prior to the other? Or could they both be gone, go in parallel even for a period of time?
So, well, the bylaws themselves are meant to be the foundation. And so the work plan itself will evolve over time based off of, you know, evolving changes perhaps in policing in San Rafael or the need to bring forth reports that would then go to the council. So the work plan itself would, would evolve based off of either community concern or just evolving changes in policies and police or things that the police department would like to bring forward or the things that the committee is interested in. So the work plan will evolve, but the, but my understanding is that, again, the bylaws provide the foundation, the scope and focus of the work. And then the work plan just supplements that in a way. So that is the way that, that, that we're looking at the work plan and the bylaws in terms of how they, how they relate to each other.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the other question is sort of around the committees, sort of the health of the committee and the cohesiveness of the committee. I know you're in the early stages at this point, but how do you see just in general of the group working well, you know, if, or if there are other things that we need to take into consideration in terms of how the group is working?
Well, the, so as, you know, city manager mentioned, you know, working on the bylaws is certainly a challenging endeavor for a new group that's trying to coalesce and people are not familiar with each other. But as you can see, that we've been able to bring forward something today that, that is, that, you know, is a work product that just shows the potential and possibility for success in, of the committee. So I think that they're starting to coalesce as a group and they can attest to that themselves. You know, certainly appreciate that three members did show up today to, to participate in this discussion. So I would say that the PAC, at least from my perspective as staff, is moving forward as would be expected.
Right. Can I just add quickly to your question, Councilmember Kurtz? I think I agree with everything that Assistant City Manager just said. I also, my, my personal observation of how that group engaged around the bylog, bylaw discussion was incredibly collegial, professional and respectful. That they had some disagreement about, you know, should this or that or the name? And I think that's healthy. That, that, that's part of why we bring a diverse group of people together is that they work together and they find some things to say yes to when we make compromises. And I, I found their way of engaging around that for a new group really admirable.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Councilmember Bushy.
We're just having questions, not comments?
Yes.
Okay. My question, in the context of the comments I will be making, much of this is, of the, the set of rules appear to be an orderly set of rules, very similar to other rules. The one difference that is very stark here is the stipend. And I'm wondering if we have enough detail on that. Like, for example, how will it be paid? When will it be paid? What are the tax ramifications of it? On what, what do you have to do to get, to receive it? And what if you don't, if you don't attend a meeting? Or what if you attend one meeting but not two? Or have all of the, those details been worked out somewhere else that's not here?
They, they have been worked out. And I will say that I believe in the staff report for June 5th, 2023, we did collectively, we, the Royal, we made reference to a stipend and that was also done as part of the, the outreach and engagement around the PAC. So since we made a commitment to the community and to the members in advance that there would be a stipend, that's why you're seeing them being included in the bylaws today. However, to your point around procedurally, there is, we did speak to our finance director and the city clerk did research with other jurisdictions that have similar stipend programs and that generally speaking, there's some consideration for tax consequences. So if you get below, above the $500 threshold, then there's a need for W-2 and things of that sort. And so that's why we kept it at the $50 number because we didn't want to create any sort of tax implications or needs to, need to file. So with the $50 stipend, there's that. But, but certainly what we wanted to do and having the stipend is we understand that for some that may want to participate in the PAC, there may be some, you know, economic impacts and may affect people's ability to work. There may be additional childcare or caregiving expenses that may be incurred. So all of those things factored into the consideration of the stipend when it was put forward as a part of the engagement. And again, because the commitment was made to community to have the stipend and that's why you're seeing it in the bylaws today.
And I'm 100% on board conceptually. I think it's a great, it's a great idea. I'm a little bit worried. The, the mayor and I serve on a couple of other boards that have stipends, some of which are paid in such a way that, that the headache of getting it outweighs the, the amount. So I guess my, my, my comment is that the, the nuts and bolts of how this stipend will be awarded and all of the details are well thought out and are convenient and, and readily understood by, by the board members. That particular topic, again, which I support 100%, it just, that type of detail would often be in a set of, of, of board documents, initial documents here. And I think we, we don't have that. So we want to work that out before we get into some sort of conflict over that.
Of course. And so we've been working closely with the city clerk's office and she's been, again, she's compiled information from, with jurisdictions within the Bay Area. Our, for the administrative process, we would follow something that's very comparable to County Marin in terms of their, their forms and procedures, just for, you know, for the sake of consistency and also something that's been, been tested and, and seems to be working quite well. So that would be our, our model. But certainly, we, we appreciate your comments about the need to make it clear and to be, and not be burdensome on the committee members as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Well, I'll start with, go to comments and I'll start with Councilmember Youran Gulati, as you've been critical to the conversation from the beginning.
Thank you. So are you. Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that this has been a long process and I do feel really good about, you know, the community that we, we did a lot of outreach and really asking the community what we needed to have. And that community, we already heard about like from like the youth. We went through different organizations. We went to like community members where they were not part of organizations, the schools, the Vietnamese community. And so I'm actually really excited to, for this committee. The amount of applicants, over 30 of them, was amazing. It was a lot of work, but it, it was so rewarding. And we were very careful in selecting every member of the committee, the nine of them. And I do feel that they represent the community, is very diverse. I'm honestly impressed that in such a short time, we already have like a, you know, only two meetings and there is a bylaw. We can keep waiting for like the perfect bylaws and the perfect way to do things. But I think I'm impatient. We've been meeting since, you know, this unfortunate incident, September of 2022, and it's been like a year and a half. And I'm really eager to see what the committee is going to be working on. Again, I know just by talking to some of the members that they are eager to reach out to the communities and, and I'm excited. It's, it's hard work and it's never going to be perfect, but we really want to make progress. So in that, I really appreciate all the committee members that they are part of this and also to the committee to be open and, and also supportive of these committee members so they can really do great work in collaboration with our staff. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy, comments?
I'm focusing just on the bylaws, what, what is in front of us tonight. And these bylaws appear to be even-handed rules set out for the orderly function of the group so that all ideas can be brought forward in an orderly way and addressed by the body and then brought, and brought on to next steps. That's the, the purpose. I think this is setting up exactly the right type of structure that is flexible, can be, can be changed. If it, if we find that it doesn't work, we'll, we'll make changes based on actual examples of it, of what is occurring in the, in the real world. But I think these bylaws set the stage for this organization to move from its sort of foundational phase to actually getting down, getting down to business. So I look forward to these bylaws working and, and the group bringing, bringing us new ideas. So I'm in favor of the bylaws as presented by staff.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
I do really appreciate the update that was provided. I appreciate all the feedback that was provided. And thank you to everyone who's serving on this brand new committee. It's hard. It's hard work to be part of that and to be part of this. But it's also really exciting because you're setting the groundwork for so much going forward and that's important to our whole community. So I appreciate that going forward. I think the bylaws do provide a good working, what would you say, a working template to keep going. And I'm looking, I like the items in the work plan and the calendar and the schedule for that. I think that will be very helpful and informative for everyone. And so I look forward to the next steps. I'm happy to support this going forward. The only thing I would say is if questions come up, you always have the option of forming subcommittees, which we know what that means, is more meetings. But, but, you know, it is an option. And it was very easy to find on the site, the recordings of the meetings. So it encouraged the public to participate because they are open meetings.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I joined this council in January of 2021. I was fortunate to be appointed by the people around me on this dais. In my application, I stated in the section for racial justice that we stand up a police committee. I am proud that this is happening. This is well before some of the actions that had taken place in the 2022 timeframe. And this is something that has been and continues to be essential in our journey towards building trust with our community. I am also heartened as I have watched the proceedings of the Police Advisory Accountability Commission Committee, that there is dissent, that the different lived experiences informed contrasting opinions. The bylaw process, as I watched it span two meetings, was robust. And I think it's a reflection of the fact that, that the matter of how we police is something that is very important to our community. I also believe that there is a moment when we take the bylaws as they're written today and move forward and continue to evolve it as policing will continue to evolve in our community and in our country. So I take this as a, as a starting point. I encourage continued contrasting opinion in the committee as they, as they've already done and continue to, to move our way forward as, as a people. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just conclude by saying tonight, it is the bylaws that's before us, but it's the culmination or progression of many conversations out in the community, communications on the dais, communications here in these chambers as we work together to rebuild trust. And we might even disagree the best way to rebuild trust, but what we've understood from our community is that this was a critical piece to move forward those conversations. Chief Spiller was incredible in terms of bringing that forward. Not all police chiefs are so progressive, but he is. I want to thank Lieutenant Everly as well Assistant City Manager Angela for your facilitation of having this new committee being created in a different way. We want to meet the moment and we want it to reflect our values. And that's what this bylaw, it's just a piece. And Councilmember Bushy said it well, this is a structural piece. But to me, it's part of this underpinning of the values and the way that we want to be together as a community. Is this perfect? No, I don't think there's anything in the world that's perfect. But is it a step in the right direction? 100%. Until we're at the table, having the conversations, we can't start moving forward the way we want to as a group. So there's going to be more robust conversations, I'm sure, at the PAC meetings. They are open to the public. We invite you to watch, to listen. You can email, you can contact any of us. You don't have to come to a formal council meeting. We want your participation because the best trust, the deepest trust means that we're all showing up together, right? We're working through it together. It can't be incumbent on one group or another. So hats off to the PAC members, the three that are here. Please tell your colleagues how grateful we are. It was an incredible pool of candidates who put their applications forward, 35 plus. It was amazing. And the nine of you were chosen because of your deep commitment to social justice, your deep commitment to San Rafael and wanting to be a part of something great and better. And you have a lot of work in front of you to do that. So thank you for that. We do look forward to having report outs for, for those of us that don't make it to the PAC meeting, to, to hear how that all transpires. So with that deep gratitude for where we are, I would entertain a motion from So, uh, with that deep gratitude for where we are, I would entertain a motion from Councilmember Yurans Gulati.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the resolution establishing the bylaws for the Police Advisory and Accountability Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurans Gulati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. We have, before we get to the San Rafael successor agency, we do have open time for public expression. This is for anything that's not on tonight's agenda. The council is always here to listen, both in the chambers and outside the chambers. Anything that we hear tonight, we will not be able to comment on because it's not on the agenda. And it's very strict rules about that. But we are always here to listen. I know Madam City Clerk has some speaker cards, so what I will do is start with these. This nice thick stack. If I mispronounce your name, please correct me and I apologize ahead of time. And what, uh, you'll have two minutes and you can speak in English or Spanish and we'll have the interpretation. Do we need to toggle? Just thinking. No. Okay. Um, and as I said, we will not be able to respond formally, but we are here to listen. So in no particular order, because it's just a stack, uh, the first is Annabelle. Would you like to come down? And then Lucy Hollingsworth is after. So, Annabelle, do you wanna? And if you're not ready to speak, you can just say, I want to wait a moment and we'll go to someone else because I know it's tough to speak. Oh, welcome.
Buenas noches a todos. Gracias por el tiempo que nos dan en esta noche. Pues estamos aquí otra vez como Grupo Voces de Canal. Estamos aquí para volverles a recordar que, uh, estamos soportando los cuatrocientos que están empezando otra vez de nuevo los desalojos. No solamente en el building de cuatrocientos y no están habiendo más, uh, buildings que están aumentando la renta. La realidad es mucho para los inquilinos. Uh, muchos de la comunidad vienen porque ya es la tercera vez que les aumentan la renta. Y no es justo que, pues se les estén aumentando tanto la renta porque la realidad nuestros trabajos no nos aumentan también dos, tres veces al año. Entonces queremos de que por favor ustedes sigan trabajando con nosotros. Sabemos que hay dos de ustedes que están con nosotros trabajando, pero la realidad necesitamos a todos que puedan trabajar, que los puedan ayudar y que realmente pueden hacer un cambio, uh, que pare el desalojo y también que puedan parar la, el aumento de la renta. Pienso que lo justo sería una vez al año, uno, dos, tres veces. Porque la realidad es difícil para una familia poder vivir en un apartamento ya de tres mil dólares y más cuando tenemos niños. Entonces nosotros estamos aquí hablando por nuestra comunidad. La realidad trabajamos en la comunidad. Queremos seguir viviendo aquí en nuestra comunidad. Y estamos aquí esta noche para recordarles que nosotros vamos a seguir luchando y contamos con el apoyo de ustedes y ojalá en un futuro podamos trabajar juntos y que realmente haya muchos cambios en el área de canal. En el área de canales donde necesitamos esta ayuda porque la realidad la renta está muy alta. Gracias.
Gracias, Annabelle.
So, good evening and thank you for the time, uh, you have given us here today. And once again, we are here on behalf of Voices of Canal. Just to remind you that we are here to support the four hundreds apartment complex because the evictions have started again. Uh, but not only at the four hundreds. Some people are also seeing rent increases in other areas. And it's not only happening once or twice. It's happening three times even throughout the course of the year. And it's not fair because they don't increase our job wages that same amount of time, if that only once. And we're all here, you know, because we have some of you, two of you directly that are here working with us. But we want all of you really to be hands-on and work with us as well. You know, work with the community, uh, because we are part of this community. We want to be able to work here and we want to live here as well. Um, and we hope that together we can create this change.
Thank you. Lucy Hollingsworth and then Ethan Stroll after. Welcome, Lucy.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Lucy Hollingsworth, a senior attorney at Legal Aid of Marin. I focus on housing. Our mission is to provide access to the civil justice system to low-income and underserved residents of Marin County and foster more inclusive and equitable communities. Our work shows that past policies such as redlining, lack of tenant protections and failure to build sufficient housing have led to skyrocketing rents and a housing crisis. Our clients are being displaced from their homes through no fault of their own. They face drastically higher rents and move-in costs and very little inventory. Most displaced renters are forced to move out of the community, out of Marin, and some even into their cars. As already one of the most segregated counties in California, San Rafael must do something to stop the loss of valuable community members who are disproportionately represented by communities of color. San Rafael contains approximately twenty percent of the population of Marin. But in twenty twenty-three, over forty-two percent of our clients, our housing clients, were San Rafael residents, most of whom we were not able to save their housing. Tenants in San Rafael do not have time to wait to build, for San Rafael to build our way out of this. Strengthening tenant protections and enacting a cap on rent increases is the only way to stop this. All tenants across Marin County have a right to affordable, secure and hattable housing free from harassment, discrimination and arbitrary evictions. We urge this council to recognize this right and look forward to working with the city to develop inclusive policies that help achieve this goal. Thanks.
Thank you, Lucy, and thank you for all that legal aid provides for our community. Ethan Stroll. Oh, oh, um, Gabrielle, Jen, wait one moment and then you can go next. Is that okay? Okay. Welcome, Ethan.
Good evening to the city council and San Rafael community. My name's Ethan. I'm from San Rafael. I work for Legal Aid of Marin as well and organize with renters at the Democratic Socialists of America in Marin. And it's my profound wish that San Rafael become a more integrated, more vibrant and socially just community, uh, in my lifetime. And I hope, uh, that, you know, these actions will make that happen. So at my job, I assist daily, um, renters who are facing eviction, uh, and rent raises in San Rafael. And to me, it's far too often that tenants receive, uh, rent raises of nine to ten percent every year and as a result, um, might pay up to fifty percent of their income on rent or face eviction if they cannot keep up with the rent. This is the reality in our community and we don't have in San Rafael the local laws to help tenants like these remain stably housed. It's also far too often that entire buildings full of hard-working families and community members face eviction when developers who are increasingly large financial interests rather than local property owners buy apartments with the intention of evicting, remodeling and renting again for more expensive. This is displacement-fueled gentrification. I hope that the groundswell of comments tonight highlight the need for additional renter protections in Marin. Please consider agendizing a lower rent cap, a meaningfully lower rent cap than the nine-point-two, um, state percentage and strengthening our just cause ordinance, uh, to, to include right to return, uh, after remodels. It's time for San Rafael to have a healthy, democratic, uh, political discussion on renter protections. To me, this is a much-needed step in the path towards an integrated, vibrant and socially just community that we all want to see. Thanks.
Thank you, Ethan. Gabrielle, did you want to go? Yeah, come on.
Si sobre la renta, control de renta, esto ha sido un tema desde hace mucho tiempo. Como le digo, yo he sido un líder comunitario dentro mi comunidad hace mucho tiempo. Esto fue un tema muy fuerte hace como diez años, donde muchas instituciones se involucraron, pero siempre digo, por eso las agencias realmente no están abogando por la población. Esto hace diez años ya hubiera ocurrido este control de renta, no hasta ahorita. Solo buscan como el beneficio propio cuando hay una, eh, movimiento por, sobre sociales cuando ellos salen. Pero realmente han abandonado mucho las cuestiones desde el inicio. Diez años, ya deberi, hace diez años debió de completarse esto, pero no lo han hecho. Y yo siento que hay una mucha burocracia aquí. Yo creo que ya estamos perdiendo el miedo también de que ustedes no nos ayuden. Ahora queremos que nos ayuden. Es necesario que nos ayuden. Nosotros hemos construido parte de esta ciudad por nuestro esfuerzo, por nuestro trabajo. Hemos luchado grandemente aquí. Hemos forjado a niños que son profesionales ahorita y que también durante, durante el proceso educativo fue muy burocrático también. Y conozco mucha gente aquí que me conoce a mí. Es donde yo empecé el activismo. Y yo creo que eso no debe ser en ningún momento. Yo creo que exigimos un cambio. Esperemos un cambio de ustedes. Queremos que, pienso de que ustedes van a trabajar realmente y no solo nos digan si lo vamos a hacer y realmente no hay un cambio dentro de nuestra comunidad. Hace diez años no ocurrió un cambio y esperemos que no pase diez años más para que haya un cambio. Por eso pido responsabilidad de las agencias y de nos, de ustedes nuestras autoridades. Gracias.
Thank you.
So in regards to rent control, this has been an issue that has been going on. Well, as you know, I've been an activist here in this community for decades. So ten years ago, this was a big issue that was brought up. Uh, there were many institutions, institutions that were involved with this situation. And, and that's why I say that some of these institutions only get involved if there is benefit to them. Once that benefit has been exhausted, they are down and there's no change that will come from it. So, ten years ago, if this would have been done, we wouldn't be here today. Here we are because us as a community, we have constructed part of what is now San Rafael. We have forged some of this community. We have forged some kids that are such an impact to this community as well. And I think part of what happened is all strict bureaucracy, bureaucracy, excuse interpreter. And I think some of the educational systems as well. I think you know, it's a little bureaucratic. So we'll demanding change and I think, I want to say that you will all work with us to create this change. And I think if we look back to ten years ago and it hasn't happened yet, I ask for your help so that we can make this happen this time around. We ask for your help.
Thank you. I'll go back to the speaker cards. Marina Palma, you ready? And after Marina will be Emma Reyes.
Muy bien, buenas noches, estimados miembros del Ayuntamiento y alcaldesa. Nuestra familia se están sufriendo con la vivienda y necesitamos su ayuda. Por favor, marquen la diferencia estableciendo protecciones para los inquilinos que impidan desplazamientos y control a los, a los alquileres, o sea, control de renta. Hagan brillar su compromiso con el progreso, los derechos humanos y los principios de diversidad, equidad, inclusión y pertenencia, demostrando que San Rafael se preocupa por todos, por todas las familias, por todos los que aquí vivimos. Desplazar a nuestra mano de obra tiene consecuencia, consecuencia negativa para todos. Y le pedimos a que actúen con compasión y tengan en cuenta el impacto a largo plazo en nuestra comunidad. Es hora de que nuestra ciudad lidere con soluciones innovadoras en materia de vivienda. Demuéstrenos cómo se ve el liderazgo con compromiso humano y justicia, y justicia social para todos. Nosotros estamos muy desesperados por lo que está pasando. No son el cuatrocientos canal, pero ya está pasando en toda la comunidad de San Rafael, de San Rafael y en canales. Actualmente nosotros comenzamos con Voces de Canal a abogar más seriamente por vivienda desde enero dos mil veintidós. Ya van dos años y el progreso ha sido demasiado lento. Las personas se nos están yendo. Nuestros niños ahora están recibiendo educación en otros lugares que Richmond y lo cual no es recomendable. Necesitamos que por favor todos ustedes nos ayuden. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Marina.
Good evening, uh, council members, um, and mayor. Our families here are suffering and we need your help. We need your help with renter protections and to prevent eviction and to have rent control. Let it show. Let us see your commitment in this beginning of what is about for equity, diversity, inclusion and belonging. Displacing our laborers is going to have consequences, long-term consequences that will affect this community. Be a leader that shows innovation, show justice, justice for all. And again, I'll say, we're pretty desperate here in the four hundreds, but not only in the four hundreds, but throughout all of San Rafael. And we're here to advocate for all these people and we have been since January of two thousand and twenty-two. But progress will show that it has been slow. People of San Rafael are leaving to other, other cities. Our kids are receiving their education in Richmond, which maybe isn't recommendable. Please stand up for us. We need you.
Thank you. Emma Reyes and after Emma Esther, I think that's an R, Reyes as well. So Emma Reyes? If not, if you're not ready, I can come back to you. Okay, I'll come back. Esther, it's either Naas or Reyes, sorry. Esther Reyes, do you want to speak or you want to wait? You can wait or you can speak now. Esther? Oh, oh, Emma.
No, voy a hablar ya. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Glendi Barrios. Estoy acá abogando porque yo soy una de las inquilinas del cuatrocientos canal. A nosotros nos ha afectado mucho los desalojos que han estado habiendo injustamente. Queremos, por favor, que nos apoyen a no más desalojos en nuestra vecindad. Sabemos que muchos de nosotros sufrimos, nos preocupamos, llegamos a, a tener estrés, ansiedad como muchos de nuestros niños. Por favor, queremos que nos pongan atención, que haya un control de renta. Yo ya me moví. Está aumentando mucho la renta, mil dólares. ¿Dónde vamos a sacar mil dólares más para pagar? En nuestro trabajo no ganamos lo suficiente. Por favor, queremos que nos pongan atención o queremos que nos ayuden o nos, les gustaría que todos los de nosotros que vivimos en canal vivamos en las calles. Pienso que no es justo lo que está pasando. Queremos un control de renta. Gracias.
Thank you.
It was a bit rushed, so the end is a little intense, but my name is Glendi Barrios and I'm one of the renters of the building at four hundred canal. And I have been one of those that has been affected from the invictions that are unjustly occurring. Here, we have been, not only in this neighborhood, but we're really suffering. We're going through some anguish. A lot of this rent increases is causing us stress, maybe some depression. I don't know. I think we need some sort of rent control. I've already moved and they are already increasing my rent a thousand dollars. Where am I going to get a thousand dollars from? It's so unjust. I mean, where do you expect us to live and work? Do you want us to live out in the streets of San Rafael? I don't think so. Please, help us.
Thank you. Aurelia Vargas. Welcome.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Aurelia Vargas. Uh, soy voluntaria de Voces de Canal. Me gusta ser voluntaria desde que mis niñas estaban chiquitas. El motivo que estoy aquí una vez más es para otra vez pedir el apoyo de todos ustedes para que nos den una estabilidad de renta, una protección de inquilinos. Tenemos mucha comunidad que está batallando con el pago de la renta. No es justo que ahora los dueños de los apartamentos, uh, estén aumentando la renta y para que no se den cuenta lo están haciendo en dos partes. Y, y más de eso, están cobrando el agua, están cobrando acanterillado, están cobrando basura y creo que no es justo. El único beneficio que nosotros queremos de parte de ustedes es que nos apoyen. El único beneficio que nosotros queremos de parte de ustedes es que nos apoyen. Necesitamos urgentemente una estabilidad de renta. Queremos que nuestra comunidad viva, incluyéndome a mí, en una vivienda justa, que no tengamos miedo de pedir una reparación porque nos van a aumentar la renta. Creo que tenemos derechos como trabajadores de este país, de esta comunidad y tenemos derechos a que nuestros hijos vivan tranquilos. Gracias.
Thank you Aurelia.
Good evening, my name is Aurelia Vargas and I'm also a volunteer of Voices of Canal. And I'd like to volunteer for this organization ever since my girls were little, they were small. And we're here again to ask for your support. We need rent stability. Our community is struggling to pay the rent. And what's been happening is that the rent increases have been happening in two parts to avoid getting noticed. But not only that, we're also paying for water, sewage, trash. And we're not here begging, we're only here asking for your support that we urgently need rent stabilization. And also eliminate the fear of asking for repairs in our unit simply because we fear that our rent is going to be increased. I think we have rights, not only because we live here in this, in the city, but in this country. We have those rights and I think you can help us with that. Help us with that, excuse me.
Thank you. Elsie Mejia. Elsie here, ready to speak? Maybe? Do you want to speak or you want to wait?
This is coming.
I know. I know.
Aquí está entre amigos. Welcome.
Buenas noches a cada uno de ustedes. Mi nombre es Elsie Mejía. Bueno, he escuchado hablar de todo, verdad, mucho entiendo ahorita porque pues es mi primera vez acá. Yo creo que he hablado de todo, verdad, de la renta, los aumentos. Pues yo creo que esto a nadie le gusta, verdad, un aumento grande. Porque escuchamos de otros apartamentos donde los aumentos de renta es cada año y son treinta y cinco dólares de aumento. No son trescientos ni cuatrocientos. O quizá pagan más, yo escuche ahí mil, verdad. Vivo en ese edificio 400 por más de treinta años. Y es difícil para nosotros, mi esposo y yo, porque estamos retirados. Y pues, verdad, no es gran cantidad de dinero que entra, pero aún así estamos contentos. Pero estas cosas que están pasando, que ahora vamos a pagar basura, vamos a pagar agua. Ustedes daban los gastos de PNE carísimo. Pues todo está caro, verdad? Y bueno, yo creo que necesitamos que ustedes, ustedes que son los que supuestamente ayudan, verdad. Yo creo que quiero que por favor, por favor, en el amor de Dios, que nos ayuden y que, pues que ayuden, verdad, toda esta comunidad que estamos aquí presentándonos. Porque pues aumentos de renta y yo sé que hay gasto, verdad, con los arreglos, pero pues eso ya no viene de nosotros. Y pues muchas gracias, porque creo que han hecho muchas reuniones, esta es mi primera vez, estuvo un poquito confundida, sé que te hablo de muchas cosas. Pero bueno, el tema es la ayuda en los aumentos de renta en el 400. Muchas gracias.
Gracias Elsie. Wait, before you, before you come. Oh, that she was speaking, okay. Go ahead Pablo.
Thank you. Well, good evening, my name is Elsie Mejía. And we've all heard many things here today, a lot of the things that are being spoken about or talked about today. I don't really understand, to be honest, this is my very first meeting here and so thank you for having me. But I think a lot of the things that we've heard, especially about this topic, is the rent increases and why they are happening, you know, some people have been lucky. I've heard in some places you only get an increase one time per year, maybe a thirty-five dollar increase. You know, I heard just now someone had their rent increased by a thousand dollars, maybe there's less. I know I'm used to a four hundred or five hundred dollar increase. And I lived in the 400s, I'm one of the persons that has been experiencing some of this and my neighbors as well. I've lived there for more than thirty years. And it's becoming more difficult for me and my husband because we are now retired and the income that we are having isn't anything big, you know, but we're still happy, we're content there. And now we're hearing that we're going to have to start paying these utilities, you know, trash and water. And we already know how expensive PG&E is, well, really everything is that expensive. And we need you, you know, supposedly you're all the ones that are supposed to help us and help keep us here. So please, in God's name, help us. You know, I think when we ask for repairs in our units, it shouldn't come from us. But one way or another, they make it so. Again, this is my first meeting here and we've spoken about many things, but the one thing is we need help with rent stabilization. Thank you.
Thank you Pablo. Cruz Vargas. Does Cruz like to speak? Welcome.
Buenas noches a todos, nuevamente estoy aquí. Mi nombre es Cruz Vargas, soy parte de Voces del Canal y estamos abogando nuevamente por los por las injusticias que hay en algunos edificios, en este caso fuertemente le está tocando al edificio 400. Aquí esta noche escuchamos que hay algunas otras personas donde también les está afectando. Yo podría decir, a mí no me afecta, verdad. Antes de la pandemia solo me aumentaban veinticinco dólares por año. Ahora después de la pandemia me aumentaron sesenta dólares. Digo, wow, no me quejo porque yo escuchaba que a otros le subían trescientos, cuatrocientos, doscientos cincuenta, ciento cincuenta. Pero qué va a pasarme mañana si también vende mi edificio, tiene otro dueño y nos empiezan a subir doscientos, trescientos. Creo que ya no estoy en una edad para trabajar mucho, los costos aumentan. Entonces es por eso que estoy aquí apoyando a mi comunidad y gracias por escucharnos. Buenas noches.
Gracias, thank you Cruz.
Good evening, my name is Cruz Vargas and I again am here, also part of Voices of Canal advocating once again for the injustices that are occurring. This time we're hearing a lot of this coming from the 400 building. We've heard a few other people that also reside there that are being affected. And I guess you could say that I'm not really being affected currently. I want to say before COVID hit, I was getting rent increases once per year, maybe at twenty-five dollars each year. After COVID, it went up, the increase was thirty-five dollars per year. But I'm hearing some people get a thousand, maybe four or five hundred percent or dollar increase. And sure, I'm not seeing that now, but what about tomorrow or what about next year? What if my rent is increased four or five hundred dollars? What if my building is sold? And I'm not at the age where I can be working so much as I used to to help cover these costs. So I ask you to help us with rent civilization and rent control.
Thank you. Would you like to speak next? Go ahead.
Buenas noches a todos, este yo, es primera vez que vengo aquí, yo soy, yo me llamo Estela Beliz. Este yo vivo en el 177 Novato y yo vengo por ver si ustedes me ayudan porque este mi apartamento no me quieren arreglar nada y me están aumentando mucha renta, este y yo dando fotos de todo lo que nos sirve, no me quieren arreglar nada. Yo ya les dije muchas veces, tengo años de estarles diciendo que me arreglen y no me arreglen nada ellos. Es que no sé qué puedo hacer yo si ustedes me pueden ayudar a que arreglen el apartamento porque está bien descuidado, no le dan mantenimiento, nada. No sé qué puedo hacer. Yo ando mucho fotos de aquí de mi apartamento, de todo lo que nos sirve. Por cierto, Canal Alliance les mandó fotos a ustedes ese día, este al otro día y hace la semana pasada. Mandaron las fotos por internet, se los mandaron, pero yo no tuve ninguna respuesta de ustedes. Así es que eso es todo lo que yo quería decir, que me puedan ayudar a arreglar mi apartamento. Porque yo estoy pagando, yo no estoy de gratis con ellos y me están aumentando mucho renta. Okay, gracias.
Gracias.
Sorry, I need to unmute. Good evening, this is also my very first meeting. My name is Stella Beliz and I live at 777 Novato. And I'm here asking you for help in person because I live at that building and they won't fix a thing. They don't want to help me. I've sent lots of pictures, I have many pictures on me right now that I can show you of the damages and the things I need repair in my unit, but the landlord for whatever reason has decided not to help. I really don't know what to do anymore. I also had Canal Alliance help me and try and send some pictures out to y'all the other day. I don't know who really receives it, but I haven't heard anything back. I'm, you know, I live there and I'm not living there for free. And I think I deserve some repairs, you know, I'm paying my fair share and I'm not getting any help. So please help me. I don't know what else to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Zola Ríos. Welcome.
Hola, buenas noches a todos, mi nombre soy Larrillo, soy voluntaria de Voces del Canal. Estoy otra vez aquí para abogar los de aumento de la renta por los 400 estamos apoyando, verdad, pero también no solamente los 400, también el edificio donde yo vivo también nos subieron la renta este año y es demasiado el costo que nos aumentaron. Entonces venimos de antemano a pedirles que nos ponga un control de renta, que nos ayuden por favor. Y se los agradecemos a todos, verdad, los de la comunidad, a que nos estamos apoyando y esperamos en ustedes que tomen la decisión del control de renta. Gracias.
Gracias.
Good evening, my name is Zola Ríos and I'm also a volunteer of Voices of Canal and I'm also here advocating to support the rent increases that have been, well, I'm here to support against the rent increases that have been occurring at the 400 Canal. But not only that building, also my building where I live, I recently had a rent increase as well. And I think it's too much. So we need that help, we need help with rent control, you know, and I think the entire community, everybody here would be very grateful for rent civilization, thank you.
Thank you. Monica Strouch and then Diana Benitez. Monica here? Oh, go ahead.
Hello everyone, my name is Diana Benitez, I'm the senior manager of advocacy and engagement at Canal Alliance. And we're here to also talk about housing. Residents at 400 Canal were recently handed eviction notices so the landlord could do renovations for health and safety. And the buildings in the neighborhood, as we know, have been neglected for decades and they do need renovations. But those improvements need to benefit existing tenants, not displace them from their homes, their jobs and their community. We need the city to act now to prevent what happened at 400 Canal from happening to other families and other buildings. And we want to see a future Canal where land and housing is owned by the Latino immigrants who live and work here. A future where our families have stability and an opportunity to build wealth, where they don't have to wonder whether tomorrow is the day that rent goes up by almost ten percent or that they're told they have sixty days to leave. And Canal residents have made it repeatedly clear, as you are seeing here today, that they want rent control and stronger protections against eviction. They have turned out again and again to take time out of their busy schedules to come down to City Hall and raise attention to this crisis. And it is a little inequitable to have them wait to give public comment at the end of this meeting. This makes it harder for working class residents to be able to participate in the San Rafael democracy. And I do want to say I appreciate the Spanish interpretation, we've been able to get a lot of folks with headsets and as you've seen, we do have a lot of first timers coming to speak to you all and give public comment. And so last, we just ask you to please move public comment back to the beginning of meetings and to put housing on the agenda so council cannot just hear our concerns and demands, but take actions to address them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Carol Underwood. Carol and then Omar Carrera.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members and the Community. My name is Carol Underwood. I am a resident of San Rafael, Fair Hills neighborhood. I moved here four years ago from the Washington DC metro area. As a professor of public health, I'm very aware of the importance of housing. We know that unhoused or poorly housed people have poor health outcomes physically and psychologically, as well as poor social relations due to no fault of their own. We also know that the life trajectory of children who are unhoused or in unstable housing have poorer access to education. They have less likelihood of mobility. I heard earlier mention of social justice, which I was heartened to hear, but I would like to see more evidence that there's action taken to increase social justice. As a community, as people who are part of the garden of humanity, we need diversity, we need differences. We need to accept other people. And if we become more compassionate and we think about others and include people who are unlike us, who have difficult situations and circumstances, if we can include people from all walks of life, not just those who can afford these exorbitant, absurdly expensive housing as someone who came from another area. And so if we want to build, if we want to be a thriving community, we need to include everyone, we need to be inclusive, not exclusive. And so in that line, I would like to encourage you to agendize rent control because rent control is out of control. Thank you.
Thank you Carol. Omar? And after Omar, Luis Martinez. Welcome Omar.
Thank you. Mayor Kate, can you hear me? Yep. Good evening, Mayor Kate, council members. I've been coming to this chamber for almost five years now to talk about the same topic, particularly in the canal. Another housing crisis is an issue affecting all communities across the country, perhaps across the globe, but particularly in the canal, we've seen something that we didn't see before. And this council has agreed with us. In 2019, you guys implemented the relocation assistance program to protect residents of the canal. The canal, we see the most transition ownership in the canal neighborhood than any other part in the city of San Rafael. You also saw the risk during the pandemic. Rents were increasing with all of us were working very hard to keep people housed. The council, once again, agree on the risk of the residents and you freeze the rents for one entire year because the risk was real. But the opportunity some brought something else to this. We have not seen the type of ownership that we've seen before. You know, this idea, the local mom and pop landlords are living in the canal, that's not true. And you can see that through the public records, we see a lot of the groups outside the area coming and buying properties to take advantage of the tax benefits that they receive that. I want to remind the council two things that happened during the Trump administration. The Opportunity Fund was created during the Obama administration and the idea was to incentivize the economy and local communities by attracting private dollars. Well, the Trump administration did two things. They removed the reporting requirements, which means that none of you, none of us will know that there is a qualified Opportunity Fund in the area. And then number two, they removed the community benefits. The idea was to engage residents because the Opportunity Fund is supposed to create jobs or build housing. In an area like the canal that is not open land, the only thing we have seen is displacements of our essential workers, of our families. This council needs to respond to these families. Thank you.
Thank you Omar. Luis Martinez and Carlos.
Buenas noches a todos, mi nombre es Luis Martínez. Estoy aquí viviendo en el área desde el año 1999, trabajo en la construcción... Estoy aquí viviendo en el área desde el año 1999, trabajo en la construcción y yo para pagar mi renta a veces tengo que trabajar hasta 12 horas diario y a veces hasta fines de semana. A veces no le dedico el tiempo suficiente a mi familia por estar trabajando para poder completar la renta. Todas estas personas que están aquí están por lo mismo. Queremos que ustedes hagan empatía con nosotros, que ustedes se pongan por un momento en nuestro lugar. Me gustaría que en un futuro hubiera un grupo de comité de supervisores que supervisaran las condiciones de que la gente está viviendo. Los apartamentos están en malas condiciones, los propietarios nada más esconden todo el moj que hay, lo esconden con pintura. Y a los meses que empieza a llover empieza a salir muchos problemas de humedad. Muchas personas me han comentado que tienen este problemas con las cucarachas y se queja con el dueño que tiene que hacer algo, no hacen absolutamente nada. Entonces, me gustaría que ustedes miraran los problemas más de cerca. Imagínense ver un avión desde lejos a verlo de cerquita, ¿cuál sería la diferencia? Y es lo que me gustaría que ustedes tomaran este conciencia, que lo que estamos hablando aquí, lo que se está viviendo aquí, que no se quede dentro de esas paredes ni bajo ese techo, sino que nos hagan por favor este de hacer empatía con nosotros. Ah, discúlpeme, no piense que estoy enojado, así hablo yo. Y es que yo me gustaría que sí, se tome acción en todo esto, que no quede solamente en puras palabras, en una plática, sino que escuchemos, escuchemos a ellos. Que nos escuchemos a nosotros mismos. Tal vez ustedes no pueden ver la necesidad que ellos están viviendo. No sé cuántos de ustedes son propietarios de casa, tienen suficiente salario para poder pagar la hipoteca, pero mucha familia no es así. Nosotros venimos a trabajar. No tenemos la preparación que todos ustedes necesitan, pero estamos en la lucha, en prepararnos para salir adelante y darle mejor tiempo a nuestra familia. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Luis.
Forgot to unmute again. My apologies. Good evening. My name is Luis Martinez and I've been living in this community since 1999. And I have to work 12 hours a day, sometimes even on weekends, just to collect enough money so I can be able to pay my rent. I disregard my family on weekends because I have to be out working. And we're all here and we're asking for you all to have empathy for us. And I think as a community, something we can all agree on is that I think at some point we should create some sort of community supervising the conditions, excuse interpreter, a group that supervises the conditions in which we live. Some sort of community group, you know, to really assess these properties. Because what the property owners do over mold, they will paint it. The problem's gone, but then the rainy weather comes, here comes the rainy season and here is that mold. We have all this moisture, this buildup. And then we hear a lot here in the 400s that there is an issue with cockroaches. Now, think of it this way. How much different would a plane seem from really far away out in the sky to being right in front of it? What would be the difference? You know, have some conscience into that. You know, and again, I want to say I'm sorry, I'm not angry. This is my way of speaking, but we also have been dealing with this for a long time and we also want action to be taken. We don't want these words to stay within these walls. We want the help. So let's hear each other out. Everybody here, everybody in here, that's what they are here for. They're here to represent their community, they're here to advocate. Maybe some of you all up there are property owners, homeowners, maybe you make enough to pay your mortgages. That's great. But what about us? We're working seven days a week, some of us. Please take the time. Get us some help.
Thank you. I have two more speaker cards, but don't worry, you can still speak even if you didn't have a card. I have Carlos and then Ana Medrano. Okay. Carlos or Ana? Or anyone else? Come on down! Wait, hold on, wait, someone's come... Oh, nope, I see some people moving. Come on down, come down.
Hola a todos, muy buenas noches. Creo que muchos viven en Canal y tienen derecho a tener una vivienda digna. Como estudiante, creo que todos merecen. Los niños tienen derecho a no tener miedo que les pueden dar desalojo a sus papás, a tener mucho miedo que puede pasar, andar preocupados que les pueden dar un desalojo. Y siempre tener ese miedo cada día. Creo que no es justo que aumenten las rentas. Todos tienen derecho a tener una vivienda digna y no con malas condiciones. Y sería bueno que hicieran este mejor en Canal. También la seguridad sería algo bueno porque a veces uno sale con miedo que puede pasar o puede pasar algo malo en las noches. O cuando uno sale de estudiar, ¿qué puede pasar? Creo que tendrían que cambiar todo eso y ver, no solo de ustedes mismos, sino de todos los que están aquí presentes, tendrían que verlo también. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Well, hello and...
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, hello and good evening. I think many of the people here do live in Canal and we all deserve to live in very much dignified housing. You know, I think myself as a student or really any young kid shouldn't have to live in fear that their parents might be evicted, that they themselves might not have a place to live and live in that fear daily. I should not have to live this way. We all deserve, again, to live in dignified housing, not in the current conditions in which you can find some of these units. Another issue is safety, you know? Safety when we go out into our neighborhoods in the evenings or if I get out of class late, I shouldn't have to worry at what can happen on my way home. Live in that fear. And I think that if you listen to us, everybody here, we're all here looking for that change and y'all up front up there are the ones that can help us there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ana, you ready? Okay.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Irene De León, soy parte de Voces de Canal. Estoy aquí una vez más para abogar porque no haya más desalojos injustos. Yo sufrí un desalojo en enero del 2021 y actualmente estoy en una vivienda de transición porque la renta está carísima y los apartamentos requieren un ingreso de tres veces el valor de la renta y eso es difícil. Estoy pidiendo que por favor eviten los desalojos injustos porque afectan a nuestras familias. Mis hijos estudian en las escuelas de San Rafael. Ellos hacen vínculos con sus maestros y compañeros. Uno de mis hijos es asistente de maestro y otro da tutoría de matemáticas. Ellos están preocupados porque no saben si podrán terminar sus estudios en las escuelas de San Rafael y será difícil ubicarse en otras escuelas. En los 400 hay muchos niños y es difícil para ellos. Sus padres tienen dos trabajos para pagar la renta y no hay mucho apoyo para la salud emocional de los niños y esto afecta mucho a ellos. Por favor, no más desalojos y control de renta a nuestra comunidad. Gracias.
Thank you.
Apologies ahead of time. That was another pretty rapid-fire comment, so I'll do my best. Intentaré hacerlo mejor, que me disparó su frase algo rápido, pero ahí vamos. So my name is Irene De León and I'm also an advocate of Voices of Canal and we're here... You know, I myself suffered an eviction in 2021 and since then I have been in transitional housing just because housing is very scarce. And they are asking for basically three times rent in order to be able to live or move in somewhere. You know, a lot of families have and are being evicted. There are a lot of children living at the 400 Canal and many of the families there, many of the parents have two jobs, maybe more, to try and get by. You know, and this causes a lot of distress to the kids. And a lot of the kids, for example, my kids, they attend Centerfell Community Schools and, you know, one of them is a student or teacher's assistant. They are working on projects with their professors and they're living in fear that they might not be able to complete the school year with their students and in these schools. So again, we're here to advocate for some rent stabilization. Thank you.
Thank you. So I've gone through the speaker cards, but if you would like to speak, now is your chance. And if you'd like to introduce yourself, say where you're from. It's fine, but you don't have to. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Tony and I live in Centerfell and I thank you all for your service to our community. That's really awesome. I have a friend who was living in a less than 500 square foot studio. Fifteen, sixteen hundred a month she was paying. Heater broke, she contacted the landlord. Landlord said, "I'm not fixing it. It's expensive. You don't like it, move." Boom, that was it. Heat is and water, as anybody who knows much, is a guaranteed right to people. It took her over a year and a half to find another place to live. While she lived in this small place with no heat, she ended up moving to Vallejo so she could afford to live. She works in the restaurant business. She now drives from Vallejo over here to Centerfell to work. People complain about the traffic. Well, why do you think the traffic's so bad? People in the service industry cannot afford to live here. People who work at the gas stations, the banks, the dry cleaners. You go to these places and you're wondering why you're not getting service. People who are of abilities to use those things because they are having trouble finding people who can work there. The highest fat rate of homelessness is senior women who are suddenly priced out. How many of you could afford 9% raises year after year after year in your housing? I urge you, I'm not a renter. I have no skin in this game. But this community is vibrant and we need to keep it vibrant. The kids are all leaving, the community is getting older. People, all the county cities are trying to vibrate, make their downtowns more vibrant. Well, there's no young people here anymore because they can't afford to live here. Please do something to help the renters of this community, the people who work at the gas station, the dry cleaners, the laundromat, whatever. They... Help them. They need your help desperately. People need to have a decent place to live. Please do what you can.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Yeah, welcome.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Cris Parra. Yo vengo a hablar como comunidad. Yo no vengo representando ninguna agencia. Vengo representando a muchas voces, muchas esperanzas que están ahí afuera que quizás no pudieron venir porque tienen un trabajo, porque necesitan estar trabajando para poder cumplir y pagar renta a tiempo. La vivienda es más que un simple edificio, es un fundamento sobre el cual consumimos nuestras... Construimos nuestras vidas, donde los niños crecen y aprenden, donde encontramos refugio y confort y donde tejemos los lazos que sostienen tejido en nuestra sociedad. El abogar por una vivienda justa es reconocer que cada persona merece la oportunidad de vivir con dignidad. Es entender que la comunidad florece cuando sus miembros están seguros y apoyados. Y es recordar que cada decisión que se toma hoy en cuanto a vivienda tiene poder de transformar vidas y moldear el futuro de generaciones venideras. No es solo por el momento, no es solo estamos hablando por nosotros ahorita. Estamos hablando de que tenemos... Hay niños, hay jóvenes que van a vivir aquí. Necesitamos que esos jóvenes sigan aquí. Necesitamos que todos ustedes nos apoyen a tener un control de rentas. Yo quiero seguir viviendo aquí, yo quiero seguir trabajando aquí. Desafortunadamente, no sé si la próxima vez me voy a identificar como un miembro de mi comunidad aquí de Canal porque no sé si lo vaya a poder pagar. Yo de verdad les pido, ustedes son los que toman decisiones. Entiendo que hay procesos que seguir, pero también entendemos que ahí afuera hay mucha, mucha gente que necesita y todas las esperanzas están puestas en todos y cada uno de ustedes. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Cris Parra and I'm here representing the community. I'm not here representing any sort of agency. I'm here to represent the voices that are out there that weren't able to be in the chambers here today because they're working. They're working so that they can pay their rent to live in this county, in this city. And we're more, you know, the buildings in which we reside are more than just a building. They are our shelter, they are our comfort, they are where we grow, where we build and create family. And we are essentially the fibers of this community. We're really embedded into this. And of course, we feel like with your support, every member here, every youth, you know, as a community, we can flourish if we feel supported. And just know that any decision you take today has the power to change the lives not only everyone here, but everyone that's coming. Everyone in our future, all our kids, the youth that we want to stay here. We want them to stay. So again, we're here to ask for... That we need rent control. And I don't know that if the next time that I'm here, I will be able to identify as a member of this community because I don't know if the next time that I'm here, I will be able to afford to live here. So there, again, there are many people that are out there that need your help and we need you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak who hasn't spoken yet? Give you a moment. Anyone else? I went through the cards, but if you didn't speak and you'd like to? Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the open time for public expression and I do appreciate you all coming down because it's not easy at the end of a long day to come. And I've stood there and spoken to the group and it's pretty nerve-wracking, so thank you for taking the time. I did want to turn to the city manager. There were questions and concerns. We can't speak to any of the items specifically because they weren't on the agenda, but there was a query around units that maybe have mold or other issues. And I would like the city manager to share what folks can do in that instance.
So if we have a code enforcement division and if you want to have our inspectors go out and look at any sort of conditions in the units, you can make a request. The phone number is 415-485-3097. Hector Carlos is the supervisor. He's also bilingual in Spanish and we have other bilingual staff. And there's also an email, code-enforcement@cityofsanraffel.org. And if you would like any support around navigating those challenges, you can reach out to Hector.
And can people make inquiries without anonymously? Can they do it?
Sure, they could make a phone call anonymously and not share their name and just... There's also a complaint form online people could also use, but we don't necessarily need to know their name.
Right, I want to be clear so people can share concerns if they're in a unit and not have to give their name. Okay. Thank you. We do have one item, so again, thank you all. As I said, we can't take any action, but we did hear what you had to say. And we are also available outside of the formality of the chambers. I want to be clear, we're always happy to meet with you one-on-one or in groups, so it's not just this evening. We have one item remaining on our agenda. It's the San Rafael Successor Agency. We have the consent calendar. Are there any items to be held from the consent agenda? Not seen any. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on the consent calendar for the San Rafael Successor Agency? Not seen any, I will close the public comment and request a motion.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Is there... It's been moved and seconded. Agency Secretary, please call the roll.
Member Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hill?
Aye.
Member Kurtz?
Aye.
Member Yedens Galati?
Aye.
Chair Kate?
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned. There. Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned. Let's see. There.